...the Montgomery County School Board's order. And we will do that with a pleasure of allegiance. Everyone please stand.
Mr. Blackburn. A pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the school board's board members, you have an agenda before you. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Aye.
All those in favor who signify, say aye.
Aye.
We now have an agenda unless I over Mr. Polis.
And the board supervisors, we need to call this meeting. Uh, it'll order and uh, I can I for work session. May I have one second please?
Second.
Uh, moving second. Uh, on in favor?
Aye.
And we're now in work session.
Thank you, Mr. Polis. Um, I'm gonna make a couple of opening comments and then I'm gonna turn over to the county board chair for his opening comments. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for a great opportunity tonight to come together and work and begin the discussion as going to secure the future of our community and of the school system. And I would also like to take note that this is the first official meeting of the, in the Montgomery County Public Schools offices. And this is in building C, and I think that you can see that this is a significant improvement over the conditions that we had over at Children's Court, which served us well for many, many years, but I can see that this facility is gonna service in a much more efficient and better way. I think this is the perfect setting for us to begin the conversation this evening about the challenges that we both face and how we can work together to address those challenges. In addition, I think that we share a legislative delegation and that we have opportunities to unite and share with them what southwest Virginia, Montgomery County, and our school system needs for the benefit of Montgomery County as a whole. Most recently, the board, the school board passed a resolution urging legislative bodies to take care of the state budget first. You recall that last year, we did not realize where our state funding level would be well into matter. And the sooner we know, and everybody can agree the better. And it is extremely difficult, exceedingly difficult, to create a budget without the knowledge of our state revenue base. So, we need to identify, and I think you will do this in part of the agenda, common issues that will assist us as one to become more powerful as a group and should be unity from Montgomery County. I think the meeting this evening provides a starting point for establishing priorities as a group and beginning open discussion that will secure the future of our community and our school system. And at this time, I'll turn over to Mr. Polis.
Thank you. Well, and uh, I was a quick person for this, but I know that I am. But, I wanna thank Cameron Jones and thank y'all for being here tonight. It's kind of busy schedule for a lot of us. Um, one of the things I'd like to see accomplished tonight is to start a conversation on what's gonna change our budget focus in the future. Um, I feel I might like to pass by people and work down the conversation and really get some ideas from y'all. Um, the other thing is, I want to state that in 15 years I've been on the board, this is the best working relationship for the last several years, not just this year, but for the last several years. We've had the school board and we've talked to other counties and other things. It's a real battle, you know, but we've overcome that because we have good representation, we respect each other, and I'm sure that this will continue. And we will have our differences, all communities in, whether you're on our board or you're on your board. But it's important to have these types of meetings so we can get some thoughts out and try to put some of the problems together and determine a direction we go with. That's all.
Okay. Well, the first item on the agenda is the capital planning. This is under the challenges for our organizations and we'll begin with capital planning. I'll begin with a restatement and then I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent and let her expand our way of a packet of information that she is going to extend along. First, I would like to say that um, since 1998 through 2006, we spent a hundred and fifteen million dollars on construction and we're very thankful for the support related to that. But due to the economic downturn that occurred, we had sold a number of those projects and that has impacted both the county side and certainly the school board side as well. But then the collapse of the roof occurred and we embarked on a very aggressive one, a hundred and twenty-four point five million dollar construction project process that includes a new Auburn High School, Blacksburg High School, and Auburn Mill School. We are at one time and we are on budget with both of those projects. And I would encourage you to drive by, if you haven't had the opportunity to go by those, drive by those facilities, those sites, please do so. Lots of activity and you can see noticeable, noticeable changes almost weekly at each of the sites. They're going to be beautiful facilities. Uh, we thank this board of supervisors for stepping up for your financial support and working together on this new approach of the construction process, which was the PPEA. Uh, we, we learned a lot through that process. We recognize we had a number of challenges, but again, if you drive by those facilities, you see that that hard work was certainly worth it. And so I thank you personally for your support and the challenge and the second. We can't stop. We still have significant need. We still have um, a lot of capital needs, a lot of intellectual needs for the school division. And this can be tonight gives the school system and the county an opportunity to begin an open discussion about securing the future of our students and of our citizens. I think long-term planning and destination of future funding for our communities is critical. It's for the school system and it's for the community. And I consider that we are beginning the process of what I call securing the future. We have got to step forward. We've got, we, we, we have the history and we need to learn from the history and the past to help us improve and move forward in the future. And at this time, I want to turn over to Ms. Blackburn. Ms. Blackburn, we have a couple of questions.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Actually, the information that Mr. Jones was referring to about the projects that have been completed since 1998, you have in your packets, pages two and three, shows you a list of all the things that we had accomplished with your support over that period of time. One of the things that was just really kind of eye-opening for me is that from 98 to 2006, we spent a hundred and fifteen million dollars. And look at that long list of projects. And then right now, we're in the process of a hundred and twenty-four point five million dollars worth of construction. And it is actually just three projects, but three very major projects. So I think some of that talks a little bit about the cost of doing business and how it has changed over the time period from 1998 to 2012 today. So we're excited about what's happening with those new projects. Uh, you also have in your packet is pages three, four, and five of your packet, a little bit of a history lesson. And I think maybe even on Monday night, you all looked at some of these very same things and I thought it'd be good for everybody to look at them together. There was a capital plan and there were very distinctly identified projects for Montgomery County Schools. And at the same time, there was financing and very specifically identified projects for the county in that same time period. What you have on pages three, four, and five is pretty much a summary of the priorities that have been established by Montgomery County Public Schools. And status showing exactly what was done. And you can certainly see the voids if you look at the charts of things that we did not get to, either because of the economic downturn or because of some things that happened in our county that changed priorities and changed some of the decision model that was in place at that time. It is something to be proud of, I believe, that this community, school board and board supervisors have been able over a period of time to accomplish so much. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that we still have some aging schools. We have probably eight schools that are over thirty years of age. And uh, there will have to be discussions about whether to recapitalize those schools or whether they should be replaced. And if you look at page six and seven in your packet, it highlights some of the issues that will follow. I think one of the things about recapitalization versus new construction that people sometimes don't think about is that recapitalization of a building, for example, Christiansburg High School, which is one of the schools that is definitely on our watch list, which is now forty years old. Estimates for really going in and doing a full recapitalization of a school like that are pretty close to seventy percent of new construction cost. And that's if you really go in and redo major systems and you do the cosmetic and, and you also do the instructional spaces. So, interesting, I think, comparative data about the cost of new construction versus the cost of major renovations. We have some overcapacity schools. And one of the things that I would say about the overcapacity schools is, is that they are largely your newest schools and they were built with the future in mind. So they're not overcapacity just because. They're over, they're, they have capacity because it was the desire of both board supervisors and the school board to build for the future. Mr. Jones used the phrase several times, securing the future. And definitely the building plan that has been in place here in Montgomery County, no, Montgomery County is a look to the future because you have a plan for growth. And we have some schools that are overcrowded. And unfortunately, where we have space doesn't always match up geographically with where we have overcrowded. So there's some very real issues. It's a large county. It's uh, not practical. You really expect that students who live, say, in east Montgomery County can get all the way over to McCoy to go to school or can get over to Christiansburg. It's a distance. And it's not only a distance, but it's a, a distance in many, many rural areas which are not easily traveled, especially sometimes with the weather conditions that we face. So, you have overcapacity, but you also have some undercapacity and they don't mesh together always in terms of geography. The school board has been talking about how to address some of our overcapacity and undercapacity issues and also capital needs. And then they have been talking about both traditional and non-traditional ways. They've talked about changing grade level configurations. They've talked about redistricting. They've talked about consolidation of schools. So, there are more ways to address capital needs than just new construction and our board has been looking at those very carefully. And that's especially in a time period when you have scarce resources. But there will be some that you have to address long-term through new construction projects. I think one of the most important things, and it's one of the conversations that Craig and I have been having for over a year, and that is the need to, to just lay out over a five, ten, fifteen-year plan even. What are the needs both of the school system and the county and establish a systematic way of addressing those? Whether that be through a designated revenue stream, whether it be through some kind of plan for use of end-of-year money that occurs at the county level and the school level. But if we're going to secure that future for our citizens and for our students, who are our citizens also, then we've got to be looking past today and past 2013 and really have a systematic plan to address those things. Um, in addition to that plan, I think it's important to think about some of the things that have been happening in Montgomery County and in our towns, Christiansburg and Blacksburg. Most recently, I happened to turn on the news and they said that this area, they were specifically talking about Blacksburg that night, but this area is well ahead of the economic recovery in most of Virginia. In fact, the little blurb that I heard said that Blacksburg specifically was one of the two areas in the entire state that have been designated as out of, they used the terminology that that might have like this minute, the word they use. But anyway, they said, "You are officially recovered and you're starting to grow." And that's very, I think, characteristic. I was at the opening of Backcountry the other day. And so the kinds of things that have happened in Montgomery County through the efforts of Montgomery County board supervisors sleeping on me, the aggressiveness of the towns in pursuing things that would stimulate the economy say a lot about what's gonna happen in this community in the next few years. And, you know, I think one reason that we're very successful in recruiting new business is that they believe that there's a workforce and a talent pool in Montgomery County that will provide the resources that are needed in these industries. And your school system is ready to serve in helping to continue to create a workforce that would be a very positive addition to Montgomery County. So today, I'm really excited because we're here and we're gonna have an opportunity to have some conversation. And I know that you all have been looking at the properties that we have surplus and that's a potential revenue source as well. And in addition, with the move here to building C, we will very soon have the opportunity to could jump the street into the surplus property column. And we are working aggressively on Shawville Elementary School going into the surplus column. And so there are opportunities perhaps to support capital to some of those things as well.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna turn over, over to both boards and if we have some comments, questions from a new board member at this time, we'd like to have a discussion. Comments? Polis, can you head up?
I'd like to talk about a little bit about Christiansburg High School and the long-term plans. As we've been talking in our board, it's been a while before we can borrow any money. We do have some capital funds set aside at this point in time. And I'd like to hear, if we're going to replace Christiansburg High School and build a new high school, that's one thing. If we're not, perhaps we can look at some upgrades leading up to a major upgrade, leading up to maybe within thirty percent, because it's huge signals when we're talking about these scale of the projects. So I'd like to hear the long-term plans for Christiansburg High School and maybe start a discussion. So we're, we're not making a decision over a short period of time, but we've got some time to look at it and make an educated decision.
I think we have to share some of the things that we are doing at Christiansburg High School. We've on our card, it lists discretionary funding that we have. We've done a pretty major rework with Americans with Disabilities Act accommodations, changes this past summer. Also have done some refurbishment of all of the bathrooms at Christiansburg High School. Christiansburg High School is our very first 21st century secondary school. We're in the process of putting smart boards and overhead projectors and the document cameras in every classroom at Christiansburg High School. It's about a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar investment. So as we have discretionary funds, we are certainly looking at opportunities to do some things there.
Well, I guess I'm saying that looking at, we might have some additional funds that might be available if we knew what some of the needs were at Christiansburg High School in particular. And I mentioned Christiansburg, this is the high school. I know the three D's and elementary school, I've thought of this frankly about that as well. But if there was some needs and we have some ideas of what the projects were, I would be interested in special, but I would want to know, or if we're gonna invest two million dollars or we'll be tearing this building down in nine years and building a brand-new building. And that to me is a good investment. So I, I, it was, I guess I'm looking, what's the long-term plan? What people thought on, on that Christiansburg High School?
Well, I definitely can speak to that. I definitely have a Christiansburg community that are well aware that they're the only high school in the county. And that, that definitely plays strong. And the bathroom facilities at the stadiums are not good. There's lots of, you know, auditorium lighting, auditorium seating, things like that, that all of those different things, as I have shared many times with our board, help those groups bring money in. It also takes a lot of the strain off of the county because they don't have to provide those funds to do so. So, in my opinion, if we can make each individual more easier to raise money, then, then it helps us all in the long run. Those are a few things that I know for certain, even if we're looking at ten years or fifteen years down the road, you know, those are things that need to be done. Even if they looked, or even if we as a board were looking at building another school in fifteen years down the road, I would hope to think that that school could be used as a school, because I think it's a great school. So.
As I stated in our board meeting, we were talking about the facilities. It's not just the athletic fields and gyms and locker rooms, but it's also the classrooms, the science labs, things. I think some of that equipment was bought over from the old Christiansburg High School. That school was designed as an old building. You know, they went back in and bricks themselves up and, you know, kind of closed it up some. But it's, it's not. It was built forty years ago. It's not suitable for learning today. As we have all said on our board, what we would want to see in our buildings. And I can't imagine ten years from now, if you don't do something to that building. Now, one of the things that I would hope that we do on our side of the board is go back and look at, it was 2006, when these boards, these two boards came together and came up with a capital plan. And you all said, "Tell us what your priorities are." You all had your priorities. You sat down, listed them and said, "Okay, this is how much money we're gonna be able to pump into capital in the next several years." The economy fell out. So I think it's time to go back and revisit that. So in a few years, when we do have funds, we're gonna be ready to go. And there could be some, some planning, just like there was the planning for Auburn High School. And there was a preliminary looks at the Christiansburg Elementary Primary site to see if there was the capacity to build a building there or expand on that. I just think it's a conversation that we need to be having and then come back together and say, "This is what we have. When will we, when will we be able to do that?" And that will answer your question as to how soon. Because if we don't know how much money we're gonna get and we're gonna get it, we won't know how soon. Because I want to stay.
It's hard, and obviously I want to speak for myself, not my board. But it's hard to, if you don't have an idea of the price and some needs, it's hard to say, "Okay, well this, you know, here's your money." We, you know, you want to know what, what we're looking at and what is needed. And so that, I guess that's what I'm, I'm, we also though, if we're gonna put that back in, maybe we will be keeping that building and utilizing it as another school or who knows, an elementary school and if we build another high school. But I still would like to know, what's the long-term plan? Is it to build another high school or is it, maybe we invest and build another gym? If, if I remember right, remember the Blacksburg High School gym, we built it with five million dollars. Is that what we're talking about? Add another gym to Christiansburg High School? I'd like then, you know, is that what your board thinks is a priority in the system of Christiansburg? But at the same time, I don't want to put five million dollars into that gym and then nine years later, you be looking at that building ready to high school.
And I understand that because one of the things that happened when they built that building forty years ago is they had the force doctor look at CDT programs. And it has a wonderful CDT wing that is forty years old. Okay? So, I don't know if we have the capacity in that building to bring just those up to the need. Because I don't know about you, but when I take my car in, they don't really get in there with the hangers and screwdrivers and stuff until they plug it into a computer to see what's going on. And then they have these nice little kits, you know how those are? You pay for the whole thing, it's a light bulb. So there's a whole lot that has to be considered with that building, especially when you're talking refurbishment, because there's a lot of things going on in that building that is just not capable of handling out. And as far as that site is, you know, everything is built up around it. And, you know, we have to have so much green space and, you know, all those criteria. But at the same others, how long do it take us to get land?
And that's the point I was gonna make, is that based on experience on the board, if you're gonna build a new high school, you need land and purpose. And where does that land gonna come from? Where's the money gonna come from, the purpose of it? And the standards when we built that high school for land is certainly significantly changed for those building purposes. So, from my decision makes important, I will need to understand if we're going to rebuild or build a new location. Where is it gonna be? Are we gonna, do we have land? I mean, is your land locked there now? You don't even have enough land for the softball field for the girls to play softball on. So, and if you look at 2006, the handout, the Christiansburg Elementary project was identified critical back in 2006. And I think that we would be remiss if we didn't have looked at the Christiansburg Elementary Schools as well. They're significantly overcrowded if we look at the data. And maybe not quite as old, but they have needs as well.
They are, you know, they are. You know, one that's in my district, yes, I do have one in Christiansburg. The primary elementary, which was supposed to have been the next school, would have been upgraded, replaced, but something left down. That was the primary in the elementary building.
At this point, it is the most crowded one there.
Which is another reason we had this identified, because it was going to build a new Christians, a new, a new elementary school with all the ladyage overcrowded, a lot of elementary schools are recognized now. But, you know, it's what the citizens of Christiansburg want. You've got a four-year-old high school, but you've also got some aging elementary schools and overcrowded elementary schools that have been on, on our list since 2006. And I guess at this point in time, the old Christiansburg High School, old Christiansburg High School, it is gonna be, Auburn kids are coming out there for a year and then they'll be going back, as I understand, though that they're not gonna be coming there at all?
It's not my recommendation that they come there and visit. There are no ties to that, it's a secret.
But that building, it seems to me could be utilized for an elementary school. Hopefully, given a lot of the overcrowding, there's been several million dollars put into that building. It has a gym, which a lot of the older elementary schools don't have. And it seems to me that that would be a huge pricing when dealing with that. Now, I've been in the building a few times, just because it's my practice, I've already had life, I've been in the building. Is it perfect for an elementary school? Probably not, but it's a good solid building. And it seems like we would be able to utilize that.
Our board had asked that, you know, we keep reuse plans for all Christiansburg Middle School, which is trying to use Sublight for middle school, as one of the topics on their ongoing discussion about capital and how we might find some short-term solutions when we may not have the capital yet to do the long-term solution. To go back to the conversation about Christiansburg High School, we do have a comprehensive list of improvement projects that are needed at Christiansburg High School. And one of the reasons that we do is because even in the 2006 plan, it was identified as recapitalize, not rebuild at that time. So we'd be happy to share with supervisors the list of systems and those kind of things that are in the priority listing for issues at CHS. There is some space on the campus in terms of ability to do something. There would be ample space to build a science wing if that were something that would, to come out of discussions. There is also, we have worked very carefully, Mr. Jones mentioned the softball field, to go out there and have the survey work done to be sure that a girls' softball field could be accommodated on that campus. And currently, the information that we have is that it could be. So we would be happy to share the, that list, but, you know, But, you know, the thing that comes out of that conversation is, you know, you've got to take care of what you have. Even if you know someday you might replace it. You've got to take care of what you have, which is one of the reasons why I consistently push even the rookie projects on the list for, you know, some funds every year. Because we want to keep every school in the inventory of Montgomery County Public Schools in the best possible shape that we can. Because we don't know when we're going to exactly have the money to replace anything or everything. So, we want to take care of them. And it's an ongoing need for us to have a reliable funding stream for more than small maintenance projects, so.
And I think, and I think that's one reason, when our board met Monday evening, we talked a little bit about not only the anticipated potential leaks that the schools would have, but we also talked about the sixty-three to seventy-three million of county needs over the next ten years for things like parks and public safety and those areas. And, you know, when I came in two thousand and nine and Brenda came in two thousand and ten, we talked very early on about a need for a long-term capital plan. But what happened is that the capital plan of the schools just came slamming right to the front of the high school situation. And so, now, kind of people will take our breath. We need to, we need to really spend some time hashing through what are the priorities, what are the concerns for both groups? And really lay out something so that when we do have the funding available again, we can start working down a methodic plan.
This is probably the first year that I haven't had a student at Christiansburg High School in eight years. So, listening to a lot of the needs the community is probably, I know a little bit about. And I have to say, I think one of the things that, speaking, agreeing with Brenda, whether we were to build it in ten, fifteen years, I would hate to see those students and not, not definitely forgetting anything on the elementary level that's needed. So, making sure I say that. I would hate to see them have to wait ten years before they got something. That's my concern. Because I think a lot of the Christiansburg folks feel like sometimes anything they want, they have to do themselves. And mind you, I understand that goes on in every school. And I understand PTOs and PTAs and boosters. Every one of those groups at every school work hard and they fundraise. But even at Christiansburg, when they do a re, a field, they have to pay for it. A ticket stand, they had to build it. And when you start doing those things, when we build a new school and a new stadium, that are, that comes with it and it's expected. That's one of the things that I tend to hear that I think a lot of Christiansburg families feel that, you know, everything like that, we've either had to get donated, we've had to do it ourselves, or things like that. So, it would be nice, I think, if they saw that, wow, somebody's looking at us. And somebody's paying attention to our needs, first time in a while, for whatever it's worth.
Any other comments, questions?
Just kind of a general question. I'm just curious how useful this school board was two thousand and six actually still is. And I don't know, has your board kind of revisited that? Because, I mean, they're not only listed, but I mean, that they're actually ranked.
We're going to begin that process Tuesday night.
Okay, thanks.
So, Brenda, it's an excellent question. And if I'm untrue, being six years old, it certainly needs to be revisited. Yes, based on the discussion we've had here, we continue to revisit it from time to time.
And that's why I would like to ask the board supervisors too. I mean, like Chris, and also mention things. I mean, what's I know mine too about our schools that doesn't mean that we're going to do it or, I mean, we've got to make the decisions. But I'd still like to have as much as I can.
Before this, you asked, you know, that the Christiansburg County Council tried to get Darren, but in regards to this issue, especially about Christiansburg High School. And one of the problems was we're not saying we have to keep up with the judges. Hopefully, we would like to at least feel like that we were insane everywhere. And so, I, that's kind of why I'm looking at this. And, you know, with tight mind, you've got a lot more to manage than gym space, more of those things. As someone who has been in our auditorium, I know that the speaker system does not, we've got this wonderful electronic board, but it doesn't match up with the speakers in nineteen seventy-four. So, you get a lot of crack and a lot of problems. The lights, I have to know from the auditorium, they can change the bulbs, but they still don't light up because they aren't wired properly. Those are all some of the things that I know are going to be at Christiansburg High School. And when you start seeing some of this, then you kind of feel like, maybe I'm not a first-class citizen. I'm a second-class citizen. And so, especially when you're going to be talking about, you know, we're glad that we're going to have a family. We've got some nice schools being built. I'm glad that they've got proper facilities. But at the same time, I'd like to see us at least look and try to look at a long-term plan of what we're going to do.
Who's frank?
The criteria that we used to look at was, I think it's still a good criteria. So, I don't, I don't know how much time we really have to spend on going over the criteria again. Because those are the issues, no gym, capacity. Now, those are just the basic things that you need to look at as far as how a school is going to serve you. So, I hope that our board is not wasting a lot of time revamping all of that because we laid that out pretty good. For me, I would be very upset if the Christiansburg Elementary Project was not the first thing that happened with this. Go spend some time in Christiansburg Primary. The walls are the artwork that the students do, okay? Closets, literally, are now used for learning spaces. In between, you know, walls, so to speak. You'd have to be in it to see it. It's like a maze of little nooks and crannies where teachers are supposed to teach and children are supposed to learn. Christiansburg Middle School, I think was built nineteen sixty-three out of wood. And it had some additions and moldings. It's an old building, you know? No gym, well, you know, gym and cafeteria. Gym and cafeteria, if I don't have a supportive. So.
And this list, Christiansburg State Elementary Project is listed as critical.
Right, and I was just saying, with the discussion, I understand Christiansburg High School. And I totally agree, that has to be, even the next on the list, can you fit the criteria, it would probably fall there. But Christiansburg Elementary, there has to be a change there. There's a discussion in our board as how we can help with the overcrowding, you know, for a short period of time. But those, that community, our community deserves the same level that other communities have with the new elementary schools.
Do you think, or is your, I don't know, do you think that when we turn, if it's turned over to an elementary school, that the old Christiansburg High School, the old Christiansburg Elementary School is turned into an elementary school? Is that going to be enough? Or do you have numbers, is that going to alleviate the overcrowding that's happening now at Folling Ranch? And also deal with some of the issues that you're having there?
One of the things that we talked about, that was intriguing for me was, because I know we always talked about the old Christiansburg Middle School, High School, whatever you want to call it, helping with the overcrowding. But, and I'll pat myself on the back, when the Christiansburg Middle School and Blacksburg Middle Schools were built, we built them at a large capacity. So, there is room that maybe big boys could go in to help with the overcrowding and have a stadium in our building to be learned in. Alleviate some of the overcrowding in the elementary and possibly the primary, just whatever you would do with that configuration. But there needs to be a new building. And we haven't had the discussion yet. And that's why, you know, we're going to, we're going to, that's exactly where we're at. But shortly after that, I would hope to be back in this room or another room together. And we're talking about it, just like we did in two thousand and six. This is our plan, and this is why. And you all present what you all have and figures for that, and we do the same. And then we come up with a plan. And we've worked toward that. And it's not going to, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be painful. It's going to be painful because it's going to cost money. And that's not something that everybody has right now. And do they don't want to give it up? And I can understand that, too.
Well, I think too, a lot of people are under the assumption that Christiansburg has three elementary schools, but they don't technically because Folling Ranch is K through five. But Christiansburg Elementary and Primary really only make up one school because it's K through five between the two of them. So, really, Christiansburg is probably, you know, growing leaps and bounds. And we really only have two elementary schools. I mean, because Bellevue kind of stands alone. It's not really considered Christiansburg.
Yes, it is.
Well, it is, but I mean, it is, and it's not, Bellevue's kind of, you know, not like, I look at that as like crisis four. I mean, they're Blacksburg, but they're kind of in a community.
Talking about Bellevue?
Yeah, it's in a community of its own, you know, where I was.
I was going to say, don't leave Bellevue out of the discussion.
No, I mean, it's, I went inside the town limits. No, it's just, it's not you at all.
And I think that you see, whether challenges are a force, I mean, you know, certainly you've got many issues at Christiansburg High School that need to be addressed. And some of those are maintenance issues that we certainly should be addressing.
I just want to comment. I want to comment on that maintenance part of it. And piggyback a little bit on what Chris was talking about newer too, taking care of what we have. I just want to say, most of the sidewalks around Christiansburg High School need to be dug up and redone. I try to go in the back. You know, they have a wonderful cosmetology group. I have my hair done there and cut, and I love it. And yet, I am scared to death. I take my little cane and I walk very slowly. And there are a lot of elderly people or people my age who go there and have their hair done. And that sidewalk going into that back building is absolutely, unbelievably, I think, dangerous. So, I would like for us to not only look at the recapitalization of our things, but how do we really maintain what we have? Because here we have this huge investment. And yet, I see that we only can do certain things at certain times. And having been in Christiansburg, not only as a teacher, as a substitute, and as assistant principal, there are many things there that are a maintenance issue that are just as important as I think the recapitalization and adding. I know we need additional classrooms. I tried one time to be a substitute in one of the rooms that was just kind of built on the backside of the teacher's workroom upstairs on the second floor. And the heating and air system, I don't know if it's still there. And I was so loud, I couldn't hear myself. And, you know, I've got loud voices here. So, I mean, there are things. And Christiansburg, I know, is not the only one because I've been in most of the schools with some, with student teachers and from Radford. And I understand that what you're saying about maintenance as well as the recapitalization or even new schools. So, I just, and I understand, I know it's a money issue. And I don't know where we go, but it also is a planning issue, I think, so.
It is very much a money issue because I was amazed, you know, when I first started looking at the Montgomery County budget, school system budget, that there's really only two hundred thousand dollars in the school system budget for small capital projects and maintenance. And the only place else that you can get money is end of year money if you don't spend it. And you know, as you have shrinking budgets, you're going to have less money left at the end of the year. And what you all have given us from one amount this year, you've been helping us with the five-year reading plan. So, if you think about a ninety-two million dollar business with nineteen major buildings and other smaller buildings, and you have two hundred thousand dollars for small capital and maintenance, it's nothing. And that's why each year, we've been trying to write in a million dollar, a nine-hundred million dollars for basically small capital and maintenance. But because of the shrinking budgets, it's come out of the budget each year. But it is definitely an issue.
Any further questions, comments? Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I know we've talked quite a bit tonight, maintaining what we have, and need to prioritize what we need, dah 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 dah. But the reason why we're here today was facing what we're facing was, I guess, thirty-five, forty years ago. If the two boards had came together and done some planning like this, we wouldn't be here. Now, the reason why we're here is because the hole has gotten so deep that we're trying to figure out how to get out and how to move forward. So, the next two boards thirty years from now will say, hey, you know, that board supervisor's school board, they've really done some good planning. And we've got everything, you know, going great. Now, the issue is going to be with the four strands that's out there, scoop strands. There's needs in, and some of the needs are greater in some strands than others. And this building, this school, this overcrowding and things. The critical part is going to be, how do you prioritize without people saying, "Me first." We're all on this thing together, and some are going to have to be a little patient than others. As you prioritize requiring fixing, rebuilding, recapitalizing, whatever, whatever's going. But we need to ask our citizens to be patient if we do come up with a plan. To be patient with us instead of saying that, hey, they got this, can we get that? They got this, can we get that? Where are we at in the plan? And so, I think the effective communications of whatever the plan is to citizens is going to be critical to let them know that we had forgot about the overcrowding situation here. We had forgotten about the one gymnasium here and so forth. So, I wanted to just to say that.
Right before I came on the board, the criteria that was being used was this strand, and this strand, and this strand, and this strand, right? Everybody got something out in a rotation. And then we went to the criteria that they had planned and set out, you know? These are the issues that we're using. And the building is overcrowded, it's this age, it doesn't have a gymnasium as far as elementary and things like that, that's hard evidence folks can see. This is why this building is first. This is why this building is going to be, you know, down to this, at this point. But then you run into a gymnasium flats and everything gets turned over here. And that's why we're here, trying to start all over again to say, let's make sure that we're getting back on plan so that when everything is right as far as the money, get that debt paid down, and we can start moving forward, then it'll be laid out there and everyone will know. Because in two thousand and six, when we finished this plan, everyone knew who was going to be next and how and why everyone would be next. I just think it's very, very important that we do another plan like we did here. Because that was some wonderful work that happened when we did that. I revisit those meetings in my mind more often than I'd like you all to know because it was a time when I just saw the county moving forward and there was good planning going on on your side because of all the projects that you had to do. I didn't agree with the jail. I didn't agree with the courthouse. But that was the plans that you all saw that you needed for the county. And what we needed for the school district, we have two beautiful elementary schools. And they came out of that plan. So, I'm just real excited about this, these steps that we're taking to get this moving again.
Board members, any comments?
One question that I'd just like to just to miss and clarify up. As a kind of study, you see if you can build a new high school on the existing Christiansburg High School location. While the school is occupied, is a place that can be moved back. While the school is occupied, is it a place that can be relocated or?
There's not been a study to my knowledge of that and it'd be very hard to relocate them. Certainly, one of the things that we'll talk about in the priorities study is, you know, the question about recapitalize versus new and also take a look at that campus. There are 1,100 and close to 1,150 students there right now. The old Christiansburg Middle School that we're using now for the middle school has a capacity of about 950. And that's with the portfolios that we have out back. And you have some real major issues with the specialized programs that a high school would need, would need like the career technical and the very high-end science labs. But not something that we couldn't tackle yet.
I'm just thinking, in today's world, was it hard to just to get land? If you can maybe go up an extra story rather than straight out? Put a couple of elevators in if you wanted to and develop that aspect of it and kind of build where it's at? Then you could go back and look and do some actually, do some drawings on it, do some render done and possibly put in a couple of gymnasiums where they would be able to connect if you ever, if we were able to build a high school. But all those things would have to be done before that, in order to, it seems to me that it might be possible one way to make that work because land in Christiansburg is gonna be hard.
Yeah, then you could park the debt underneath in the garage, I mean, a gymnasium on top of that. You wouldn't have to take up the space, there's some ways to look at doing some different things.
There's lots of things you can look at, but to me, like that, you've got to look at how much land is available.
Right, and that's, to me, that's the decision. For that, do you think you make a decision?
And if it will fit on one of the parking lots out there and for a year or how long it takes to build it, say, hey, can't drive to it. You know, unless you're gonna have something where they can be shuttled back in there from a possible spot, so.
Certainly, certainly a good suggestion. Anything else, if not, we'll look over to the next agenda item? And that is attracting and retaining that high quality workforce. Thank you for this discussion on the capital, I think it was very good. Certainly has given me some up direction in my thinking.
Can I back up a second? Sure. The focus meeting is in our mind, just about, I don't think we missed anything. And we have a lot of discussions on how to approach things. And after the discussion we've had so far tonight, I think it has a lot of needs in the area. And we haven't discussed where the money's gonna come from, okay? And we are running toward an hour in the next 80 minutes again, okay?
What, oh, I would guess.
Okay, and we have a lot of things, and I'm gonna say this in part of my wrong, but you have projects pretty necessary, okay? And because of the way the budget situation is and the way you have to handle your budget by rolling over, fantastic, it wants to come back to you. We never seem to get anything done or enough done. So just as a suggestion, one of the things I'd like to see is I have two boards working together on a budget like this and maybe take a penny or two next year. I don't know where it's gonna come from, maybe tax increase and what happened after growth versus a while we'd like to see things come from. And designate, so one penny was about $700,000 this year. We'll have a reassessment in a couple of years. When I started on board, I think it was somewhere around $300,000 to a penny, okay? So it's doubled, all right? Now we had a flat increase in property values the last four years. By the times, they were growing 30% every four years, 33%, okay? Hopefully, we'll get back to the 3% or 4% a year again, okay? So if you take, I'm just gonna throw this out, we'll put a penny on school capital out of the next budget segment. We'll put a penny on capital for the county budget. We've already started out this year with $1 million for capital improvement and we designated at this point to animal shelter, okay? And then the next year, we take a penny.
Probably get another penny already for Napske's project. Like you have three things now.
Well, this time, maybe that penny for the county debt would be bad, I don't know. You know, because they've already got a, you know, those things we got to assess. I'm just starting out with this, okay? And then the bottom of it, we're taking another penny for school. That penny is rollover every year and at $700,000, one penny, 10 years, $35,000 or $35,000?
$70,000.
Seven, seven million, yeah, seven million, okay? They can do a lot of annual projects that they're trying to do with $200,000. And if you give us a lot of annual budgets, okay? Another thing is because, this is my opinion, okay? Because we force you to use your rollover funds, you are wondering what you can do. If we could somehow take and combine some of these things that come down to, you know, a bit and combine services where we, instead of having two building properties, two, we did two of that. We can take all of our capital for building and put it in a run of Robin City, county and school, okay? Just kind of a thought, we gotta get the money somewhere and you're really gonna grow up five cents. In three years, you're gonna grow up over time, over time, or you're gonna be able to take out your revenue is coming in because of our happenstance development and things like that.
If I could make a comment, if you didn't foresee that you could go up another penny to put back for capital plan for schools, I very well would vote to take, I mean, I love animals. But if you half of that, instead of all to an animal shelter, put it to the schools right there, if you've already decided, to me, my opinion, I couldn't see not doing that.
Well, I agree with that, animal shelter, that's something.
I love animals, I'm no disrespect to the animals.
Yes, I agree.
I think children are above.
Ms. Perkins?
Do we have some of the debt service that we now have? Do we have some of that showing and being paid off in?
We do, but I believe it's at least five to seven years before we get to a level where we have the ability to start rolling that forward, which will be debt.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying. I know that we talked about that when we went to did the 12 cents. But I'm saying, as we, so you're saying even the next thing to be paid off or refinanced will still be five years old?
If, when we structured the financing, Carol, help me if I'm throwing this up, but I believe when we structured the financing for the two high schools and the middle school project, we, in labor, it's kind of maxed out the credit card for several years. And we structured the debt payments that even though some of the other debt was coming off, the school debt will increase for a period of time, so it was basically a rough.
I remember seeing all of those, but I was just thinking that.
You're right.
There might be some way in putting that debt together that we could get some pennies to, you know, to do things. Because surely, I know we sit down or think of, where are we gonna get the pennies? I mean, you know, where are we gonna get the pennies to?
I'll give you 10 cents right now.
What?
I can give you 10 cents right now.
You what?
I can give you 10 pennies right now.
From what?
So the school properties, okay? I can't tell if it's gonna be done tomorrow or not, all right? But we can just pay someone between $8 and $10 million, you know, when we do that. We're gonna have a turnaround on those properties in most cases, if not all, where instead of being a liability to the county, it'll be a revenue source. So I'll have $10 million or $1 million cash in my pocket and then I'll have a continual revenue stream, hopefully, because we're putting this back in the taxable property, okay?
So you think a surplus property, so gonna?
Their values will contribute, contribute.
But they're not anyways.
Well, I can't tell you.
I had the same question.
You know, this, you know, like a railroad state person, you know, the market's down, but we're looking very hard. We have some, we're, things cooking right now, we hope they get done.
Have we had a property, what do you do, reassess?
Appraise.
Appraise.
Thank you very much. It's about the pain pill I have, but anyway, have we recently done this to see what those surplus schools could possibly give back to us? Because we know that it has to be for school construction or the debt. So everything that we get from a sale of a building, so I'm trying to think, all right? We have those, we may be able to restructure again. Where are we gonna get the pennies, the $10 million from the sale of the schools? I mean, I just.
The sale of the schools is gonna bring it to us, you know? We reassessed all the county properties, I'm not reassessed, but we came through all the county properties that we have. And we know we're getting them from the schools. We have to, you know, get a price on them, hopefully one's gonna bring a big buck.
Those are one-time ones.
They're one-time money, but that's what you're capital, they're not going to do anything else.
Right.
Well, what we do.
What happens when it's continual?
As we sell a school, we just put that money.
So if you lower your debt with it.
That's all we just.
Or if you pay that money without financing something and you can pay it or two or three million dollars worth of immediate needs, roofs and things of that nature.
So how is that way to grow schools or how do we go for the debt we just went into?
Correct.
Right, now, regarding that debt, it's, I understand with these bonds, it's not like a mortgage where you can just pay down a little bit extra for a certain period of time that you can pay down and if credit please correct me if I'm wrong, but so that need put up on this side because we are committed to that. But one of the other things Jim has been, and I think it's gonna help the county with the other train, with the two interchanges on the interstate. And what we've got looks like bipartisan support of the Virginia State Legislature. Obviously, that would be a nice thing for us because right now our meals tax generated $200,000 approximately last year. If we can get them out of these, we can get those type of things going out of those interchanges, then we can get the meals taxes instead of just Blacksburg and Christiansburg. And plus, we take farmland and it goes into commercial, it brings out a lot more taxes.
Right now, the interstate generates about $12,000 in taxes annually. And in particular, just the development of roads and construction of buildings, it'll generate $300,000. Well, that's not including meal sets, that's not including annual property taxes down there, that's not including jobs, you know?
It's likely it's gonna take four to five years.
It may do that, it may do that, but we've got things cooked, these contractors have things cooked. They can't do it till we get it, you know? And I'm not saying these things are happening wrong, but we're not gonna go to schools tomorrow either. But we need to get immediate needs while we get out to that.
And I think the funding is certainly an important process. And I think that occurs once we come up to you with our list that says serious work to critical. But I think that your point is well taken and, you know, we'll take many opinions we can to solve it.
I would like to ask if there's ever been any discussion at all in talking with Virginia Tech? Because so much of their money, well, really it is not tech. And I know several universities in our Commonwealth do contribute. I know we have the towns hoping to get something, but so many of our children in our school system are either graduate student or staff or professor, administration, children. And I know, as I understand it, our capital index went up as I go around, therefore we got less from the state. But possibly a lot of that was due to research center or the fact that our employment was up of other parts of the state, thanks to tech, thank God. But I'm just wondering if there's any thought of possibly reaching out to the university?
Yeah, I do have that, that's true.
Maybe just probably have a new idea, you know?
Well, it's not a new idea, but I can tell you the conversations that we have at administrative level of the folks at Tech, that's not an idea that would properly ever go very far.
But they do contribute with their events, you know, this is their, fill up hotels, fill up restaurants, you know? Very live business, we have that for me quite a time in Christiansburg, you know? And those are the, our ads, my, is that we give a proportion of sales statistics, I mean, not numbers. We give a portion of the sales, yes.
Kind of give a proportion of the sales.
Yeah.
Well, because they are a very large employer, they also feel very strongly that they, they provide, they provide employment to a large number of county residents, that's how they contribute as well.
Absolutely, because we are educating these very loving young people. And so I think that's a part of our responsibility to, to help.
Well, I see the water has arrived and that makes a good point, move to the next agenda item. I mean, it's a good conversation, certainly, but we do have two more agenda items to pick.
Price of four dollars, you know, without the price of four dollars, people, that's directly working with the president of Virginia Tech and then he's sending it down.
So that was on the one, other universities could, and possibly it would be worth a discussion because of our needs goal.
I just want to make the point, was Albert, that statement that Sue Martin referred to, it was not because of Virginia Tech component, I think it's a bigger backlash than what we have.
Fred, do you think that they would consider in regards to the foundation, as the foundation continues to buy more and more commercial real estate, obviously they're not a taxpayer at this point. And unless the lease is over, Marty can correct me if I'm wrong, I think 10 years is where it really starts kicking into that the leasehold has to pay some real estate taxes. Do you think that approaching them in regards to looking at some kind of taxation on leaseholds or something along those lines, is that a possibility? I understand that the real estate runs by tax and due to that for foundations, that is a type during the month?
It's certainly a political discussion, not an administrative discussion. I think the administrators, you know, have the opportunity once a month to sit down with Sherwood Wilson and talk about a lot of things and he certainly understands we're working in front of our needs and I also can understand some of their positions and why they feel the way they do. That is a, that would be quite a political challenge to move through, I think. And they, and they do feel that, as I said to, this is all written, they do feel that they contribute to the community already in a number of ways, not necessarily through tax or anything, but through other avenues and that's, they feel that's their contribution.
To the county, they feel they contribute to the county that does support our public life.
Maybe not directly dollar-wise, directly to the schools, but through their employment, through their activities within the county and the region, they feel that that's their contribution.
I'd love to hear, not now, sometime I'd like to really understand that better because we have to have. I'd love to hear, not now, sometime I'd like to really understand that better, because we have to have money to be our teachers and et cetera, we realize it. And so I'd be curious to know more about it, that's interesting, thanks.
And Mr. Albrecht, thank you for the excellent segue into the next item, whom our agenda was attracting and retaining a high quality workforce. Uh, I'll begin with just a bit of an opening statement, I think we will open it up for discussion. Um, first of all, we'd like to congratulate Montgomery County and your economic development team for making Montgomery County very attractive to new business, and, uh, I think the fact that it speaks for itself when you look at, uh, the workforce that we do have and how we're able to sustain and keep business. I think that we know that our region has been indicated as one of the best and brightest for their students and their teachers, uh, and that we do have a broad base of a workforce in the county. Um, but keeping them in this area, it is becoming a more graphically compressed area with, uh, the employees live in one of the five or six counties they can easily communicate, commute, not communicate, but easily communicate to work, commute, commute to work, not like communicate. So, you know, as we, as we continue, the key to the whole competitiveness issue, okay? And what you see in the region is paying our teachers. And we are in scarce demand, our, our funds to be able to pay our teachers, um, have been stagnant. Uh, we have had a one percent salary increase since two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And for an early career teacher, uh, that really is only no more than about four hundred dollars total increase in compensation for a four-year period. And if you look at what happened last year with the VRS, and how we funded the VRS, uh, a new teacher coming into Montgomery County Public School System this year actually turned less than eighteen fifteen in year four. How much did that, five percent? So, you, you know, we've had no step increases for the past four years, and I believe if you have a chart that was in your package, and I say none, um, nope, it's not your right chart, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say date. And I believe the chart is a, an actual indicator about, uh, how we're continuing to fall behind in the area of pay compensation for our teachers. We talk about, and I think that's, hopefully, going to be one of the beauties of this conversation with the board, and when we talk about coming up with pennies and discussing how we're gonna do capital, if we don't start talking about teacher salaries and how we can focus on increasing our teacher salaries and maintaining the benefits, and I know, um, Sheriff Politis has some, some ideas about the benefits out of it, we're gonna have the collapse of talent in Montgomery County when it comes to teaching. We've had a roof collapse which was bricks and mortar, okay, and we're gonna overcome that. We're gonna overcome that next fall when we open up these beautiful new schools. But if we don't start looking at the salaries and benefit package and looking at how we can become competitive with our neighboring counties, we're gonna have another collapse happen to us and shing on us if that happens. We have got to understand, come up with a way to start rewarding and paying the people who are doing the hard work day in and out inside the bricks and mortar, because that's where the real value comes in. So with that, you have that, um, I'll open it up for discussions, uh, but the bottom line is, when it comes to paying the benefits folks for losing ground, remember losing ground by accident certainly. And I don't know, this is why I wanted to hear any comments you'd like to add to that.
I think you said it very well, you know, the chart tells you fixed volumes, you know, instead of competing, uh, in salary with, uh, uh, communities that we would probably see ourselves as more comparable to with Redmond County and, uh, Salem and Bradford City, you know, we are competing much more so with our very rural neighbors, uh, who are totally quite different than us. And the VRS issue was huge, um, this year Montgomery County was only able to transfer one percent, and we have to transfer at least another percent each year. But the big pain of it is that some communities were able to transfer the entire five percent. And not only did they transfer the entire five percent, but they built it into their salary schedule. So, for example, if I went to work in, let's say, Salem as a brand-new teacher, the salary schedule would have been enhanced by five percent. So it wouldn't be me making five percent less than the teacher next door made. So that was really, uh, a very negative thing, uh, in competitive competitiveness for us. And, you know, and I think the numbers say it all, and, uh, you know, definitely we're gonna have to talk about compensation this year, whether we're able to do anything with compensation this year or not, you know, my two leads are all worn out, but, um, we have to talk about it because I find this chart something that I'm proud of, and I think that most of the folks in the room would, uh, feel proud of it.
It's nice to have this chart that says teacher salaries, but we have a lot of other employees in this district that we worked hard to bring their pay up above them in ways where it's at some of the portfolio members, but I can't understand. So when we talk about compensation, I mean, we need to make sure we're including everyone in this.
Absolutely, Mr. Brown?
And we're having the same issue on the county side, uh, the school side, so it's not, uh, specific to teachers and school employees, so we're having the same problems on, on the county side. But, uh, keep them, trying to keep our salaries competitive, keeping losing our qualified employees to other entities. And it makes it pretty tough when, uh, you know, you can commute to, to Rono, Salem, and, and, and years ago, we built the system so, I mean, it's portable with VRS here, and they're, you just take with you and go, and, and, uh, so we're falling behind, uh, as well.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't, and I didn't mean to come across as saying that we're not appreciative of the fact that we face the same issues that we did. And we fully understand that, I mean, the salary issue is, is crossable over, as you can see with the teachers, uh, driving to Salem for another seven thousand dollars for one year is, is an easy decision to make, and, Mr. Gay?
Um, I was trying to, it's a sense of what, and I seem to remember this discussion from previous, but if you should press my number, what, what cost, I'm always wondering, ongoing costs would be for, presumably, one percent? At a cost of, do you take into account the other employees and system?
Um, one point six percent, which is kind of the equivalent of a step in the salary schedules that we have. The salary schedules are all out of lack points, not because they haven't been touched in four years, but that would equal one point three million dollars. So I figured you could do pretty close to four and a half percent for about four million dollars, four point eight percent or so is for three point nine million dollars.
Board members, any further questions or comments on the salaries?
Well, I have a comment about the, the whole thing. Um, Chip Luce was talking about planning for capital with pennies, but we're talking about basic operations. And your operating budget increases on both sides, it increases each year because nothing is really decreasing. So when you're budget planning, to me, that planning starts now, and you start looking at the things we should start looking at together. And that would include everything that we have that's increasing, and the things that have an increase that needed to increase. So just as it's important to plan for your capital, I think it's really important also to plan for your operating costs. And not just wait until all of a sudden the state doesn't send us money, like we know that they're not going to, and we know we're gonna have to write a, a check back to them, we know these things are gonna happen. And then it becomes, um, a situation every year of federal state property tax, and we all agree that that, we wish we had other ways to address that issue. But then all this becomes wrapped around everything, and I think what I think so pleased about is our first community meeting in Meadowbrook where we really got a chance to go out and talk to citizens about what's really involved with budget planning. And of course, the greatest part of our local budget goes to schools. And I think this kind of thing is really important that we're doing now, we're setting groundwork, so hopefully the people can understand what we face as locality, what you all face as a school board, what's really happening and not happening at, at the state level, so that there's that more of an understanding when the whole budget thing comes up in the springtime. So I wish that we could even take the discussion about the school needs out into the public too, because I think, you know, there's, there are people out there that would really, I think, want to be involved in it and want to help out. And there's all kinds of things going on now, with people writing to their, um, legislators at the state level and really trying to help us out, and I think that we just sort of need to, to go along that way. But getting back to my main point is, I think that this is a really good discussion as far as looking at things, and we, and we're looking at it early on, but operating costs are very, very necessary to think about, and that, of course, what drives your operating costs? Personnel, personnel, we all know that, we have to look at it, and, and I think on both sides of the aisle, we're very lucky to have the personnel that we have, but, um, to keep the personnel, yes, that's gonna be a challenge. So, um, I guess that's all I have to say, I'm off my soapbox now, because you guys know how I feel about the state, but, um, I'm glad we had this discussion.
Mary, I think what you said about the, uh, the meeting, that was awesome, and maybe the school system could be invited to participate in that. I thought that was wonderful.
Or maybe you'd like to take the message out there, you know, we, I think back to how Mark Warner got his tax, um, his taxes changed around when he was governor, what did he do? He went on the road with a PowerPoint and went to communities and said, "Look folks, here's the deal." And that's where we are now, we're look folks, here's the deal, or lack of, and this is what we're faced with, and we need your help. And this is, and this is a great example of it, this chart says it all, and I think it's a great place for so many other employees too.
When you look at the Bradford City, now, they recently did an elementary school, but they're, they're in a high school and a middle school, it's probably thirty years old. Um, I don't know when the fire was that burned down the old high school, but it was, uh, before my time. And if you look at some of the other, uh, localities, they have older schools, they do do refurbishment, some of them make the Redmond County sense pretty, with some of their new schools. They went with you in thermal heating, uh, using the fifty-six degrees that roughly it is in Brown to be able to use that for cooling and use that for heating, because it's got lots of great long-term savings, um, and they were able to build their schools cheaper than we were. Uh, so then there's more dollars to be able to spend when you don't do many, if you try to save the percentages of refurbishment, utilize the schools for, I think, I noticed on Fort Lewis Elementary School that they're talking about, uh, closing, was it nineteen thirty-four it was built? And they're still using that elementary school. Um, but it, it's not the bricks and the mortar that teach the kids, it's the teachers inside. And so if we can try to keep our capital costs down, then hopefully we'll have some money to be able to pay our teachers competitively. And I think that's somewhat of when we're competing against the Rapids, the Redmond Cities, and the Redmond County, that's what we've got to also keep in mind.
I think that ties right into the need to have some small capital project funds beyond two hundred thousand dollars, because although that is a, a much underscored, you know, it has a nice metal roof on it, it's had a fairly expensive renovation, uh, to the building, and so they've invested in maintaining the property. And I, you know, I support that, I'm all about investing in the properties that we have, but if you've got two hundred thousand dollars, it's just not gonna stretch that far, so I think that's, uh, a good point.
Can I address the, uh, salary situation? We have, I guess, uh, two salary structures between the county and the school board. Nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand is when we, uh, put together a plan for the county, and the school board at that time was the lighting program to, uh, consolidate, uh, payroll, I can't remember what we called it. Compensation plan. Compensation plan, and, uh, we took, at this time, we had a lot of, uh, county employees, maybe working in the treasurer's office, or any sheriff's department, or, uh, commissioner's office. And some of them work for the county, and some of them captivated by the state compensation board. Well, we started hearing hustles about, "I'm doing the same job, but I'm getting the same amount of time." Like this organization, you're sitting next to me doing the same job, but our pay structure is different. So, so we put this compensation plan together, and, uh, we have some, uh, exemptions for different types of, uh, functions, like, uh, the sheriff's department, you know, they had special needs, so they gave us a exemption from our policies for them. PSA, we had a couple, and, you know, but if you had a janitor, it was taking care of the needs so there would be no, you know, discrepancy in compensation. I got to him that we might petition something when he wasn't here. And when we did that in those days, nobody lost, okay? Some people weren't a gang member because I have a five-year janitor working for the school board, and I'm gonna make it eighteen thousand. And a five-year janitor working for the, uh, county was spending nineteen thousand a year. It, it doesn't make any sense, all the money's coming from the same base, we don't have any special ways to raise money specifically for schools. It all comes from the same people, okay? One time we had a very major, and I'm bringing this up, I'm moving to get the figures today, off the top of my head, but we had a high-placed, uh, individual in the county, and, uh, they took a job in the school board, and I think the pay was somewhere in the area of ten or fifteen percent higher. Same time, recently, we've done the same thing, where we had an employee doing the same job for the school board, depending on us, and we paid him. We should be competing for dollars when you're paying like the same dollar, okay? And, uh, you know, I think that's one thing we have learned to do again in the future. And I had some things to say in the next statement, but, uh, I just wanted to bring that up for the government on salaries. And I think if we, Jim, if you're looking at a compensation plan, we're looking at a compensation plan, let's sort of negotiate a plan. Now, both of you do, okay, you know, for those services.
Okay, any final comments?
Yeah, uh, along with salaries and compensation, you can also look at the technology installed in.
That would be under. That would be under that section there.
The technology is there, um, instead of having two separate units, we have one, um, the other thing would be some supplies. I mean, there's supplies that we all use, it's the same with this, with this building, um, the telephones, telephones would be another area where you could do this, so there's several areas that they need to be investigated. I know that some of this is under study now, and, and rightly so, but it just seems to me that this move, all this being on the same roof, could be a significant money saver.
And if no one has any final comments on salaries, that's an excellent segue into our next agenda item, which is shared services. Thank you, Mr. Albrecht, for that, appreciate it. And, and I'll begin by saying, you know, that just as you said, moving into building city was originally designed for consolidation services. I remember when I first came on this board and listening to Mr. Morton talk about, "We're getting ready to move to building city, we're getting ready to move to building city." Well, nine years later, we've finally moved to building city. But it's, uh, it's, it's gonna be, I think, a, a top-notch facility, and we certainly do appreciate your support because we know that you invested in this building for us as well, so thank you for doing it. Um, well, shared services, Miss, Mr. Metta's and Miss Blackburn have been discussing opportunities to the shared services for well over a year. Um, it's been something. It's been something that I have been pushing and many people on different boards have been pushing. Because we do need to look at a new way of doing business and a new way of being more efficient when we're faced with the budget constraints that we have. And long-term, it does save money. I know this from my professional experience. You do have to make an investment, maybe upfront, to achieve it, but long-term, it does save you some money. I think that we need to begin to look forward, or we need to work together to start identifying what those potential benefits may be. And some of those are ground, transportation, where hours in accounting, purchasing. There's a lot of technology there. There's a huge opportunity here that, you know, three, five, 10 years down the road, we can look back and say that the movement we made here this year, the decisions we made are where we can live in this game. If we're ready to come together, we're able to look at those salaries. So with that, I'm going to open it up for conversation. Everybody can give anything they have there. Mr. Brandt?
Mr. Metz.
Do it, Karen. Well, I was just going to make one comment that, as a superintendent, I've talked about lots of opportunities. One of the things that we talk about frequently is, in many of the areas that we're looking at, what you'll find is not necessarily an immediate cost savings, but what you'll find is the opportunity to be more efficient. And over time, those efficiencies should help you be able to reduce costs. But, you know, that's one challenge, and sometimes it's a little bit of a fallacy. When you talk about, "Well, if we combine things, we can do it cheaper." The hope is if you combine things, you can do them better and more efficient. And over time, ultimately, maybe cheaper. But that's an area that we've looked at. We've talked about a number of areas. There's several things on the county side that we need to explore. We had a retirement department hit back in June, and that coupled with getting courthouse open has slowed down a couple of the areas that Frand and I have talked about. But we are excited about getting the school board offices here. And, you know, we need to look at every opportunity and turn over every rock.
So, Mr. Brandt? I hope that we can look at some big ticket items, like health insurance. That is huge, the number of the school employees and county employees and so forth. I think it would give the county more negotiating and more power with different companies and things. And there's probably several other ones that are large ticket items. You know, I know that we use legal packs, those guys use legal packs. Let's get together and see, can we order a bunch together, or can we have a... I don't think we have a county warehouse, did we?
Okay. We don't, but what we found with purchasing, like we negotiate strong contracts. You don't have to have a warehouse. You can have all the land delivered through students.
But if we get ready to do, look at what the school side needs and the county needs, well, we do the same thing. Then we can buy more.
If we need four, they need four, it's a lot cheaper to go and buy eight of them.
Absolutely. Any comments on this, comments question? Mr. Duff?
I had the opportunity to meet with John Mills. He is over in Dallas County. And he was talking to me today about, he's lived on the county side of things, but he was there to inspect the buildings and he was there to take a look at it as far as maintenance. And it's something that they're working on in Dallas County. He says their savings are about $300,000 a year in being able to work on that. And, you know, getting to work together on something like that and shared maintenance. Buck would be stopping with the tax authority in some ways if we did something like that as far as making the news of the schools and making sure that we've got a school that can last from the 1930s until today. And I'd like to see us take a look at that, seeing how Dallas County's doing. And maybe that's something that we can be able to do.
Anybody else? Any other board members, comments, questions, shared experiences?
I'd like to make a comment, a couple of Mr. Brandt, I mean, on the health insurance.
The one weeks ago?
Right.
Four years.
Okay. Four weeks of our view, we had a presentation from, who else?
Oh, Karen.
Monroe County. And we have some things that we need to look at. But they have the same health insurance program for the school board, you know, for the county. And they're self-insured. And we've talked about it as a county, we've talked about it in our meetings, you know. And I would like to see some more research done on what kind of things it may help us with. And again, we're all county employees. We should all be having the same health insurance, the same VRS, the identification, whatever, etc. You know, I mean, school, teachers are different than us. Like you still have the maintenance people, you still have the workers, the brown speakers and things of this nature. And that's what my dad's parents helped with. The health insurance is enlightening. I've been involved with, my dad gets self-insured money out of his business, and that's been 30 years ago, you know. And he felt it was a benefit to them. I don't know if it will be or not, but it's something we, I'd like to see us looking to.
Thank you, Mr. Flotus. I agree with you. And one of the things in that presentation, they said that they haven't anybody really go back after they start self-insuring. They start talking about, and they have not had a double-digit insurance cost increase since they've been working.
1993?
And so, you know, that's something that all of us should really take a serious look at. Apparently, there's some benefits of both putting those together. I think they were saying that the school board side of things tends to be a little younger than the county.
They actually said, yeah, I see.
Oh, was it the other?
We're very surprised.
I couldn't remember the exact details of that.
It's not the size of the group that you keep.
Yeah.
You got to get over 500 employees or more to make a good piece for the look at.
Well, we'll have 2,000.
Yeah. And it's the size of the two groups together that will get the center problem.
Okay, can you?
Yes. Could we get a copy of that presentation that you mentioned?
Absolutely. We've actually, the chair had asked for us to get some information from the county as far as their rates and their benefits. And so I've got lots of sheets of paper, but anytime you start trying to prepare the health insurance benefits and rates and all that, it's like spaghetti. So we need to spend some time kind of drilling that down, but we'll show whatever we've got. We'd be glad to.
Next item on our agenda is the opportunities to work together with the legislative delegation to bring about change. At this point, Ms. Blackburn told us a few words about the opportunities the school system sees that. And hopefully, we can come together on common ground and develop some common talking points and requests of our legislative delegation. And I know that you certainly have your talking points and your needs, but I think it's even more important and more critical that this body join together and become a very strong common force and to be able to address what we need from the school division and also the rest of the needs of the county. And with that, with Frand, I would like to ask Ms. Blackburn.
I think there's power in numbers. And, you know, obviously, if our two boards are able to find some things that are common points, we have greater persuasiveness than if it's just us out there on our own. I'd like to say personally that I wholeheartedly support the efforts that you all are making to broaden opportunities for counties to be able to raise money other than through real estate tax. You know, I know, just I'll take a very simple example. I've only been here two and a half years. But in the time that I've been here, my dollar coke that I buy at Harless has gone up from $1.11 to $1.12 to $1.13. And, you know, you need some of that ability to do that kind of thing. Hey, I'm a short timer, you know.
Go to Wendy's and you can get it for free. People at Wendy's, you can get it for free. Just don't you want a senior diet coke? Aren't you 50?
No way.
Well, let me know when you want, and I'll be happy to get it for you.
I have a conversation about humanity about that. In 10-year-iron, they happened to, Mayor Ballantyne happened to come into her restaurant. I was able to, I didn't murder them.
What did you need to do last night?
Yeah, yeah. And I asked the lady, I said, "You know, we're county people, and we're tax exempt. Can you tell the rest of them we don't need to pay the meals yet because we're tax exempt?" He didn't make that too much.
We never had a thing, you know. We appreciate you all. We know that you are stepping up to the plate. And if you don't believe it, take a look at that chart that I put in your packet. It's page nine, it's number page nine. And it shows the shift in the state revenue to the local level. And, you know, if it weren't for you guys, I don't know where Montgomery County Health Control would be right at this moment. Because you can certainly see the decline in state and the increasing level. And it's very hard to keep pace with that decline from the state being shifted to the local. We thank you. We do know that you're doing as much as you believe that you can do to support us. And somehow, you know, I happen to be looking at some legislative priorities that were coming out of other school districts the other day. And one of them, a large county, their top priority was that the legislature prioritized some state money for teacher salaries. I mean, how long has it been since there's been a designated line of money from the state for teacher salaries? And that was their priority one. And so definitely, we'll be talking on our school board about making that one of our priorities, perhaps. But I do think that there's some things that we can talk to the legislators together about. You know, number one, I gave you a copy of a resolution that our board adopted not very long ago. It's actually the one that says, "Okay, we need to know how much money we have before May." So we'd like to do a deal with the money and then deal with some of the other political issues. And I understand that that's a very political animal, and I know how that goes. But you can't make a budget if you don't know how much money you have. And so we, our board approved that resolution, and someone would, you know, submit it for your consideration. If you haven't been reading about federal sequestration, would someone bring your attention to it? Because bottom line, if we're unable to resolve the budget issues, then what's going to happen is you're going to have an across-the-board 80% cut to federal programs to education. And from Montgomery County, that would be a minimum of $350,000. Boom, just like that. And, you know, $350,000, when you look at the total budget, is not that much, you'd think. But that's like six to eight teachers and a support system that goes with them. So we are going to, this coming board meeting on Tuesday night, our board will be looking at a draft of a letter that I prepared to possibly send to our federal education delegation and to our local delegation about the impact of sequestration and the across-the-board cuts to education on top of all the other things that have happened are going to be devastated. And they get your neediest kids. They get your Title I kids, your free reduced lunch kids. They get your special ed kids, and that's where the money comes from. So very, very difficult. Another thing that perhaps we could join forces on. And again, just the conversation that we've been having this evening about looking at how we can create a funding stream for future capital needs that perhaps comes from multiple sources. You know, there used to be state money for school construction. This dried up. You know, you used to could use some lottery money. You used to have literary loans. They've dried up. You had Q Cads for a while, and, you know, they dried up. And so essentially, there is no state money for school construction anymore either. And school construction is a huge, huge endeavor for a locality. You have to assume all the responsibility for it. And so again, another opportunity to have, pardon. And so I'm saying more. I think that, you know, tells the picture. But we're very anxious to try to make a statement. We have a fairly young delegation from our area. And I think if we could grow our support behind two or three important positions to Montgomery County and Southwest Virginia, and that would benefit other counties like us, that that would be powerful. And the composite index and the change in how the budget was done with no hold harmless funds for positions like Montgomery County. Well, we were one of the few who took a big hit. But it was a tough, tough year for Montgomery County in 2012.
Board members' comments related to legislation delegation sending a strong message?
I'm excited. Mr. Yost is coming and visiting our schools, and I'm really excited about that. I hope he does.
And I think, you know, taking the, Mary, she mentioned that taking the message to the communities is going to be critical. And we are going to have to get our partners and get our partners out. And at some point, we're going to have to combine them into one pipeline. And that's a challenge on what we need. Unfunded mandates, or I know that there's a couple of unfunded mandates that are going to be coming down that are out their necks that could potentially have a significant impact on school division. So we really have to send a strong voice. And, you know, as I mentioned in the board meeting last, our last board meeting, really trying to engage the community and round the community to support your efforts, Phil, and to support our efforts. It's going to take a lot of people coming together, you know, to get that voice out there. And I do think that as we start to communicate and increase the level of increased communication, we'll also increase that level of engagement.
Can you, we might as well be on funded mandates?
We're going to talk about that, I think, in just a minute. But I'd like to just piggyback from that and say that, you know, we cut $2 million in people this year. Over 40 positions, $2 million. And even with having done that, you know, our budget is down $500 from what it was in 2008. And it was interesting, we were starting to try to figure out how to talk to the public about the budget. And one of the things that came up is that if you apply inflation rate at all to the money since 2008, it would take $104 million to equal the $97 million that we had in 2008. And instead of $104 million, I have $92 million. So the gap is huge when you, you know, really look at it. And again, 40 people, they're just gone. That's after the other cuts and prepositions.
Do you want to get further into the funded mandate? Just head over to the unfunded mandate.
Mr. Jensen has a question.
Okay.
What exactly, how we work together? I'm only in favor of that. I think the more, the more you add to your voice, the stronger it is. Would that be something that you guys will do in the liaison meetings? Let us know then how we could, like, if there was a certain issue or if you wanted a letter from both boards addressing this thing. So is how that's going to work that we follow up with it?
Frank and I can do that. I've given a copy of the resolution that we did that budget target, and I'll send him a copy of the word about sequestration. Thanks.
I think whatever we can do together, our board, I mean, I also adopted, that's a segue into the unfunded mandates. As you're aware, the state has talked about the surplus that they have been dealing with. Well, one of the reasons the state has a surplus is for the last several years, they've required the localities to contribute back a portion of the money that traditionally has been given to the localities. It was statewide, a total of $60 million. Graciously, they reduced it to $50 million this past year. But that's still money that basically they look to the localities and say, "We need to have part of this back else if you realize the check, or how do you want us to reduce the funds?" And, you know, with the case of the county, as we've And, you know, with the case of the county, as we pointed out in our community, these are the constitutional officers. You know, in our sheriff's department, the state funding has gone from 77% of the operation to less than 35%. There are, you know, that's not an unfunded mandate per se, but basically it's a, it's a, it's an effort from the state, a very obvious effort to shift responsibilities to the localities to pick up that funding. And we've got to be very local about the fact that that's creating some real hardships. And as Superintendent said earlier, I think a couple of our local delegates are, I know they hear it from me every time they say, yeah, they get it. It's just a challenge of once they get to Richmond, you know, having to, having to deal with that with all the other things. But we, I agree with Brenda's comment that the more voices that are, that are seeing that issue out with them helps to bring it to their attention. And I know you've got in the school system, some mandates that truly require to meet that the funding's disappeared for as well.
To a new one, you know, great initiative, the ethanethrin, you know, the state funding is underfunded. They require that we have this in every school, that we take it on every field trip, that we be, be prepared to administer it. But they didn't give us enough money to do what they said we had to do. And then it's only funded for one year.
What is it for?
Ethanethrin is for extreme allergic reactions that you can give a child a shot. And so, you know, we have to have that. But yet, it's, I mean, you know, who committed against it? But there was not enough money that went with it. The other one is the new teacher, required teacher evaluation system. We spent probably 330 man-hours in developing the new teacher evaluation instrument. And although it has, you know, the student growth in it as a measure, and the long-term measure, there's supposed to be some kind of compensation tied to this new evaluation, there's no funding for the compensation. In fact, there's no funding for base compensation, let alone performance measure. So those are just two, not to mention all the massive duplicative reporting and testing requirements that we spend a tremendous amount of time on. The list is long of the things that are basically unfunded mandates.
Any final comments, questions on unfunded mandates? Anything that are related to? Well, now we're going to move to the more positive portion of our agenda, and then it's accomplishments. And I think that many people, you know, to end our meeting, I think it's also important to end on a very positive note. And I know that Craig and I are going to have to work together to make sure that the communities in our schools, lots of positive things going on. And just now I want to turn it over to those individuals, I want them to speak to the positive things that are occurring in Montgomery County, both from a county standpoint and the school state.
I've got a list that I'd like to pass around to both sides. We, I had a boss one time, many years ago, when we were talking about how frustrated things were and how, how tiring things got sometimes from just dealing with all the issues. We use the old analogy, it's like rolling a giant boulder up the hill and you're just constantly looking upward, trying to push that rock further up the hill. He said, what we never do sometimes is pause and look behind us to see how far up that hill we've already come. One of the things I wanted to share with you, I appreciate Carol and our staff for helping to pull this together. But, you know, probably the biggest thing over the last year that we've done is we were successful in developing a financing plan for $124 million for the three school projects. And as we did that, LUDY's and S and D reaffirmed our bond rating. And they did that due to the fact that we have stable finances, strong reserves, improved financial management. That was, you know, we were candidly a little nervous about going out with that level of debt. But the two rating agencies looked at our operations, looked at what we were doing, and said, folks, you're, you're, you're doing it right. And we are okay with that. We were also able to get $15 million of zero percent money. And that was due to the stimulus dollars that the governor allocated in response to what the law gives. And that's incredible that everybody has run that, sent letters and made pleas for our legislative delegation that we really need some help with the challenges. Another major accomplishment, and we're sitting, we're sitting in the room, working within our staff. We completed the conversion of this building to government center from temporary courthouse space to school administrative offices. We didn't do a general contract and do a bid and go out and hire a contractor for this work. We basically hired folks in-house with our own, with our own crews at the county and did this work ourselves. And very proud of how it turned out. This came up earlier in the discussion tonight. We're in the process of disposing of the surplus school buildings. We got the Ellisville Maffey Elementary School site cleared and ready for sale. We continue to work with the town of Blacksburg and a developer and property purchasers on the old BMS site. We had a meeting today, and that continues to move slowly forward. And with the surplus of the former Price's Court School to the county, we're going to get busy on moving back. Another major accomplishment with the, with the county is the courthouse is complete. The courts will be moving in next week. I was over there for a while this afternoon and registered the court clerk's office. And all of our files are being moved now. The official dedication ceremony is set for November the 7th. Hopefully, there might be a time before then we can get you in and show you around. It's, if you've ever been involved with moving a house, so now it's, it's starting to look like house moving time in there, so it's kind of crazy. Also, in conjunction with that, once everybody's moved to the new courthouse, the process to renovate the old courthouse to a public safety building is moving forward. We have briefing on that a fortnight or two ago. And we'll be bidding out that project in the next month. And you'll start to see dust flying on that building probably in early 2013. I appreciate the comments about the economic development efforts that were made earlier. We're now home to backcountry.com, which is known as the largest online retailer of friendly outdoor gear. They built a $20.5 million fulfillment center. We're planning to employ over 200 full-time people. And just very pleased with that quality of company. And we also, after that, had an announcement from a company called AeroProbes. It's currently in Blacksburg. It's going to be building a facility in Fallen Branch Park. We continue to be very, very fortunate with our efforts there. At the board's direction, the county participated in the national citizen survey, which was sent to 1,200 citizens. We rated the quality of life and other aspects of the county as either excellent or good. We got a lot of useful information from that that we'll be using in upcoming budgets. We've also won a number of state and national awards with our county departments over the last year. The Public Information Department's last annual report won a National County Information Officer Superior Award, as well as a number of other national and state awards. Our regional library and the Virginia Public Library Directors Award for posters promoting eBooks and audiobooks. And we were also recognized by the National Association of Counties for the achievements of the libraries. And once again, our finance department received a certificate of achievement from GFOA for our annual financial report. The reason that's as important is it's, it's a testimony for folks from the outside saying that we're doing things the way we're supposed to do them, and I love the little things you can't understand. Just earlier this evening, we had the opportunity with the town of Christiansburg to celebrate graduation ceremony for our joint citizens' academy. That was our second class working, working with the town of Christiansburg. And our sheriff's office recently graduated their 20th Citizens Police Academy class. Another area we've done quite well is we've formed a partnership with the two towns to form a joint tourism authority and a regional tourism agreement and hired a tourism director. That's moving forward very well. Also, our regional non-profit authority is consolidating public safety communications. And as we said earlier, they're going to be a part of the new public safety building. We're looking forward to moving that along. And also, on the recreation front, our Parks and Rec girls' softball team won the District 6 championship, the Virginia State championship, and participated in the World Series games. One thing we left off the list that, as I've sat around this evening and looked, is, look over a year, but I don't know anybody on either group. And obviously, that's quite an accomplishment. I've, I've watched, you know, some of the larger jurisdictions have had these for a couple of years. Some of the smaller jurisdictions have just fretted over, you know, how in the world do you make it work? You know, we had some concerns at first of both the school board and the board supervisors transition, I think, very well to these devices. And, you know, we still, we still haul some paper around with us. But I think it's made life a lot easier. And I think if you're talking about those areas to try to become more efficient, I think they've really helped our two elected bodies become more efficient, and that's quite an accomplishment. So that was just a sample from the game.
Thanks, Craig. Did our, your electronic coordinator, he's been an adventure, but good, wouldn't I say? And we were a little worried about it, but we had great leadership from our public information officer, board clerk, and our technology folks. And I bet you all the same kind of great leadership from your support folks. So first of all, I want to tell you, it's always a pleasure to work with Craig. He and I have enjoyed a great talking relationship. He calls me if things are, you know, good or things are bad. And I do the same thing, so we try to stay in touch. And that's a pleasure to have an opportunity to work with. We're proud of the things that go on in Montgomery County Public Schools. We think it's a great school system. We think it's a great community. And, you know, I feel like a Virginian. And, you know, that's kind of come a long way from Florida. I found myself at a stuff like the other day, and I said, you know, wow. And now, I got a Virginia driver's license and a photo registration card, so I know, you know, I'm a Virginian now. So you convert things. But it is a great school system. And it's my pleasure to serve this school system. And, you know, just a few other things that have happened this year, and some of them are repeats. And that's a good thing, because, you know, what's happy about being the best community in music? I mean, year after year, we had Montgomery County steps forward, and we are considered one of the best communities for music education. And I think that's a great tribute to the community as a whole. The governor's VIP award for educational excellence, we had three of our schools, Gilbert Langus, Harding, and Price's Court, through permanent recognition this year. Again, Blacksburg High School made Newsweek's list of best high schools. We had a fourth-time bus radio winner, you know. Our, our organization is made of so many different kinds of folks. And if you know Russell Altizer, who's a great human being and obviously a great bus rider, because he keeps running his radio. We had a Blacksburg middle school teacher, Stephanie Crawford, who again distinguished our community, I think, by being one of the NRB Technology Council Educators Award winners. Had another McLaughlin finalist, a former teacher from Kent, who moved out of state, but definitely another outstanding Montgomery County teacher. Our untitled one supervisor, Rochelle, earned James Dean Mullins Leadership Award this year. And Kurt Litten, Oklahoma, uh, okay, I'm back in Florida. Christiansburg High School was the Group AA Athletic Director of the Year, quite an accomplishment, an outstanding gentleman, great service to kids. All of our elementary schools now have 21st century classrooms in them. And, you know, that's pretty much what is done in 24 months. You know, I think that's pretty good to go from where we were to every single elementary school being a 21st century technology school. And we're working on Christiansburg High School as our first second-year project. It's a cost of about $330,000. And you all have generously supported that with some of your one-time money as well. Blacksburg High School students, you know, they say kids are not really in tune to their communities anymore. But Blacksburg High School students raised more than $10,000 in one week for Kendall Ben, a Rona County teen who'd been diagnosed with a rare form of cancer. Teenagers do have heart, they have big hearts. We have 12 Montgomery County Public School students who earned top awards in the Southwest Virginia Governor's School Science Fair, including a grand award winner in the physical science category. We had seven Eastern Montgomery High School students who placed in the 7th Annual Martin Luther King Junior Poster in an essay contest, probably the largest number of awards won by any one single school in that contest. The success in the athletic arena, I could stay here all night, so I just want, and I'll just say, we had some great winners in just about every single sport last year. And not only that, but we also walked away with the brain ball. And all-state music competition and just some outstanding student theater and music productions. If you have not had an opportunity to see some of those groups perform, please go, because they are just amazing. And new AHS and new BHS are, you know, on time and in budget, and they are rising from the ground. And it's just amazing to watch the progress that's going on there. And newly renovated AMS is on the design plate that is moving forward. And we expect that there are going to be some new RFPs going out for Auburn Middle School later in the fall. And then most importantly, you know, we are a people organization. And I can't tell you, every day when I walk into our school building, I see our students engaged in learning. And they're engaged with highly qualified teachers. And I don't think we just educate our students. I think that they are cared for in our schools by our teachers and our staff and members who are very, very much dedicated to education and government. I think that's the most important thing that we do.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Thank you, Mr. Menace, for that. And that takes us to our next agenda item. Did closing comments? I'm going to make my brief, brief, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention this evening. Thank you for your contribution to the education system here in Montgomery County. I know it's been a couple of years, and we have some challenges ahead of us. I mean, the tough times are not over yet. And in some ways, there's no way to sugarcoat it other than saying we're going to have some more tough decisions to make and some more interesting conversations as we go along the way. Mr. Brandon, you have your finger up there.
Yeah, before we close too quick, the honor service of the liaison for Montgomery County Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a copy of our brochure. From what I'm seeing, it's, it goes for approval through the school board to be distributed. But some way, it lays over for three or four weeks before we get to the schools and pass the deadline for registration. Usually, and I don't know how we can get that approval process pushed up some. And it, that's what I get from the commission, and that if it could be moved up to priority or can someone check on that and get back to me so I can report to the commission?
If you have someone call me, I'll look at it. You know, if you have a problem.
Yeah, we can just make it happen when it's, when it's done.
You'll call me, I'll look at it. Because we're happy to do that. We do prioritize getting out your literature for Parks and Rec and for nonprofits, actually, you were doing services. But we get blitzed with, with literature requests, so I'm happy that you can call me.
Okay. Second question. It seems as if, you know, from Parks and Recreation, we understand that school activities take precedence, and this next precedent should be recreation park. On some campuses, it seems like that, and I'll be blunt, that the principals of most campuses that their friends or other organizations use it where the recreation park, you cannot get it, said it's not available. But when they look, there's somebody else using it in that, other than the school activity. Some campuses, school campuses are great, others are not. And that's been an issue in the commission for, I guess, a year or so. And it seems as if that the principals on those, whoever's in charge of it, put Parks and Recreation way down to the bottom, but some outside agencies come in before it. If somebody could check on that and get the ba, get back the base of hyper reporting to the commission on what that's saying.
Question. We meet every year with representatives from Parks and Rec. We meet every year with representatives from Parks and Rec, and we go through all the requests, and it's a face-to-face meeting. So I'll be happy to follow up on that, because you didn't even sit down and go through it. We have had some challenges on our gym space because we've had some unusual situations with some of them, but we do try to prioritize using those resources, and we'll continue to do that.
Again, thank you for your time and your attentions today. I certainly appreciate your support. I look at this as the first meeting of many meetings that we engage in, as I said earlier, in order to try to secure the future of our students and the county. Just a little bit more. Just a little bit more.
I have a couple. Hopefully they have a reunion session. Please, Mr. Green.
I have two little things. One, I heard someone say that they didn't like our courthouse. Just wanted everybody to know that the courthouse was something that was mandated by the judge. It wasn't something that we planned on, and we haven't, so.
I still disagree.
But it wasn't something that's for them. And the other thing that I wanted to ask, and this is because of the news that was on TV this evening, is that we had two schools, Christiansburg and Eastern Montgomery High School, that were fifty percent below the scores on math.
I'll be happy to address that.
I just wanted to...
We do have two, all of our schools are accredited this year, but we do have two high schools that are accredited more, Christiansburg High School and Eastern Montgomery High School. It was because of their math scores. And if you've been following what went on in the state of Virginia with math testing this year, the tests were changed, the method of testing was changed, and there was a dramatic decline across the entire state. Most schools were able to still meet the accreditation standard with a three-year rolling average, but in the case of East Montgomery and Christiansburg High School, they missed it by just a little bit. So it was the math issue that did that. We have already put additional resources in those schools to try to get them up to where they need to be with those math scores. Certainly not something that we would want to have happen. The number of schools in the state that were accredited more this year rose from thirty last year to a hundred this year, and that was almost explicitly due to changes in math assessment. Next year or this year, the year we're in right now, we have new reading assessments and we have new science assessments. So obviously, based on the experience across the state of math and our own experience, we are all over reading, math, and science this year, and I hope to have both those schools fully accredited with no warning by the beginning of the coming year next year.
Anybody else?
Just one, one thing that I brought up at a board meeting, and I had the opportunity to talk to some of the jail staff in regards to utilizing some of our trustees to help you guys move in this building. You hire in two deputies, pay them overtime, that's roughly about thirty-four dollars an hour, and in exchange, you have roughly about ten men helping you move. The benefit for those inmates is they get a few days off their sentence and they get trustee status, and that helps them. Believe it or not, a lot of them will volunteer for that. They would obviously need your trucks and those type of things. I also had had communications through the sheriff, the D, the driver of work with us. Our board will probably have to allocate those funds, but I know that I mentioned it to Craig, and perhaps that might be a way that we save some money. We help reduce a little bit of the jail cost because those individuals would then have a few days cut off their sentence, and hopefully we get you guys to move. Something to do with that. And moving it over to the weekend is when their best time is, and that will be beneficial to y'all, I imagine, as well.
Weekend, weekend knows, it's during weekends.
And weekends for them, because of the way the jail staff is, the jails were pretty skeleton staff at this point in time, and due to some state cutbacks.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have the moving trucks in order to do it, because we only have two trucks and they won't move the office. You'll have to do it every day for a week. By having a moving company come in with the moving vans, you can do it in two days. And so we have to really kind of lease the moving vans. If you do it over a weekend with the moving company, the rate goes way up on use of their vans, so that's the one thing we're looking at. But it is a good idea, and we'll evaluate that and find out by using those, because I've used them.
Well, they do the free market gambling. Whatever the local candidate, they moved it after a hurricane, then they moved them back, so they've been used for education.
Ms. Franklin?
I was sitting in the square the other day in the light, and I was facing the old courthouse, and I could barely see it. Were you hoping to turn those trees away?
Yes.
Well, I think I turned one of them the other day.
I will, but I'll do, if I feel prompted to do it again, we had a nice, very nice presentation from Wally Wilson, who are the engineers that are going to do the design and work. We've got some schematics of what the facility's going to look like when it's done. I'll send it over to superintendent, let her share that with y'all. But yes, but the trees are all coming down, but there'll be some significant trimming back.
I'll walk through there, it's kind of silly just sitting there and looking at it.
It is, the former supervisor of ours was on my case line about that.
I would just like to thank both boards for meeting because a few times we have gotten better, it's gotten better and better, and I really appreciate the time and the people I do have, and get to know each other a little bit, and it's great. I thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Green?
Just a reminder about the community meetings, like if any of the school board members can attend, if not, could, is there really to get the PowerPoint to them? Because it has really good facts in it about the money, if you're interested, I think you guys will be interested. But Carol did a really good job getting all the facts out and school board mentioned. It might be helpful.
Mary, you might inform them on the dates if you can.
I'm always that young, but remembering, just letting have it in there.
You know, that brings up a good point, and I'm wondering if maybe we can think about having a joint school board, county, public meeting, where we make our presentation on outside of budget, and you may do a presentation inside of budget.
But I do the community meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm really thinking of the community meetings. I would do a presentation that first one was...
On a rainy night.
We made a very good budget presentation. The staff looks very hard on that. I want to thank Carol for that, especially, and it was a very good presentation. Now, I have two things that I want to close with.
Can you announce the next one? Or did they all get the...
I thought it was Thursday.
So Thursday, October fourth, at Gibbs Elementary. Monday, October fifteenth, at Christiansburg Middle School. And Monday, October twenty-ninth, at the Blacksburg Library. Those would be our three next meetings. And one thing we try to emphasize is there's no bottom round these meetings. If you live in Christiansburg and you can't make the warrant, Christiansburg, you might try to get the warrant to Gibbs. So, you know, it's open meetings, countywide. We've had, well, had supervisors available to make presentations, answer questions. The last one, we had five, and it was very, very good. So anybody who attended those meetings and talked to people, talk back. Because we did spend a lot of time on it, so it's nice to see the clarity. Now, two things I want to mention in the upper. Very positive note, I'm on the Chamber Board, Chamber of Commerce, as a liaison for the county. And they have developed a fund to support the schools that basically do a lot of recognition for that, and they're trying to develop some kind of plan to have business contribute. And everything I want to mention is, I was at a great meeting, comfortably still, with Auburn Elementary, I believe. And Mr. Ives and Ms. Loosley made a great presentation on Montgomery County Education Foundation.
Christiansburg Middle.
Christiansburg Middle.
No, Auburn Middle.
Auburn, Auburn. I was there, I just can't remember, oh, I got there. But it was a very good presentation, and I don't know, I have been doing since then as far as your visits, but I know you're trying to cover the county and the community. So again, this is a loving and collaborative meeting. I just want to recognize you for your pushing.
We did, we did bring those flyers that they had. I brought those back to our board, and each board member has one, so they are aware of what you're doing and what the group's doing together.
And other than that, I appreciate everybody's time and being, and I think we had a productive meeting, and we, as the liaison committee, you pop up on something, then I'm really going to push out in the next few months, so we're waiting for the next budget and do as much as we can again. And if there's nothing else, I would like to call this work session...
Drive a work session.
Drive a work session. And go ahead, Mr. Green. Ben Moon and Second, and Alma Taylor.
Hi.
And we're here.
You have a motion for German from Montgomery County School. All those, anybody who's involved, say aye. We're German. Thank you all. Thank you.